Attention. Attention, please. Attention. The meeting will now come to order. The electors and those persons eligible to vote in town meetings of the town of Guilford, Connecticut are hereby warned and notified this special town meeting will be held at the Green Community Center, 32 Church Street, Guilford, Connecticut on Thursday, December 13th, 2018 at 7:30 PM. Nominations are now in order for a moderator.
Nominate for Trotta.
Second? Any second? Okay, Mr. Trotta is nominated. Are there any further nominations?
Who are the nominations being called in?
Nominations are closed. All those in favor of Mr. Trotta?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Mr. Trotta is the moderator.
Thank you, I think. Good evening. I'd like a motion from the floor to waive reading of the legal notice.
So, how about?
Second?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, there's copies of it. You all should have copies of it as well. At this point, I'd like to call our first selectman, Matt Hoye, just to come up and address the assembly.
All right. Good evening. Thank you, everyone, for coming out. It would have shared an interesting evening. Hopefully, everyone's going to have the opportunity to be heard. We will not cut off questions or commentary. And that will happen after we go through a brief explanation. Well, hopefully, it's going to be brief. Some will tell you that I'm never very brief when I have a microphone in front of me. Why are we here tonight? We're here tonight to approve an additional appropriation of $3.1 million for the Water Main project that was approved at referendum in 2016. In 2017, I'm sorry. That referendum passed overwhelmingly, as did the town meeting, in support of our neighbors in these three neighborhoods, our neighbors and friends in these three neighborhoods who are very much denied what most people consider a basic right of life, and that's the right to potable water. So, we're back here again under a couple of unfortunate circumstances, mostly having to do with money and some miscalculations on the original projections. So, with that, I'm going to just go back over a little bit of the history. In 2016, the construction estimates for this project were put together through the following methodology. We had an engineering firm that was engaged by the town. We solicited construction estimates from four contractors. They were not bids, they were not fully licensed bids or RFPs, but it was consensus among those four. We also had the water company, who will be a beneficiary of this project, as well as your eventual water supply provider. And the collective wisdom was that the construction cost would be about $2.3 million, $2.272 million. Total budget cost of $3,116,000, which would have left the 145 property owners with an assessment to share amongst them of $1.7 million. We projected at that time that that would be about $11,700 per household, and taking advantage of the Clean Water Loan from the Department of Public Health, the 2% loan, that we are entitled to take up to $3.443 million. That would have resulted in a $49 a month assessment to each of the homeowners in front of whose house the Water Main passes. We finally got around to going out to bid in July after clearing all of the regulatory hurdles with the state. And that RFP resulted in four contractors bidding. The price range on the construction alone was $3.3 million, basically over a million dollars more than we had originally estimated. The high bid of those original four was $7,839. And that's an amazing spread for a project of this size. It just didn't make much sense. So, the total budget was nearly $4.7 million, as opposed to the original total budget projection of $3.1. That's a pretty significant difference, nearly $1.6 million. That would have impacted the assessments in a dramatic way. The assessments, the total amount to be raised from the assessments was about $2.8 million, which would have resulted in about $19,000 per household, or $81 per month. I had a conversation earlier today with somebody who didn't share or didn't believe that I understood what the impact of that would be to the homeowners. I am mindful. We are mindful, the Board of Selectmen is mindful of the impact. We are acutely aware that some folks may not be able to afford that kind of increase. To that end, I worked with our state representative, Sean Scanlon, and we went to leadership in the legislature, as well as to the governor's office. And we pled our case. And the case was relatively simple to be made. We said, "This is a public health crisis. We have three neighborhoods, 145 households for whom potable water is not a reality." And that was met with a positive reception. We had a commitment from the governor's office to go on the September bond commission meeting for an appropriation of $1.255 million. What would that have meant? That would have meant that we would have been able to reduce the assessments on each property owner. We would have taken that assessment from the original projected number of 11,731 down to 10,276, or more importantly, on the 20-year amortization on a monthly basis from $49 to $43. We received that news on a Friday morning, and we thought we were pretty happy. Mary Jane and I said we should do a happy dance on this, because it worked out wonderfully. By 4 o'clock, the roof caved in. Our low bidder notified us that they were withdrawing their bid. They had made miscalculations. Of course, that brought on a series of immediate discussions, meetings, et cetera, to see what would we do. The next lowest bidder was over a million dollars higher, $1.1 million higher. There are some in this room who've already asked me, "Why didn't we call the bid bond on the low bidder?" We didn't call the bid bond on the low bidder, which would have been 10% of their bid price, because it was the collective wisdom of our construction attorney, Jeff Donofrio, the Connecticut Water Company, our engineering firm, Wright Pierce, that we should go back out to bid because of that original spread, that significant spread, nearly a $4.5 million spread between the low and the high bidder the last time, that something didn't seem right. We also did some value engineering, changed some things in the bid to make it easier for the contracts, the contractors, to respond. So, one of the byproducts of losing that low bidder was we had to go back to the governor's office. We went back to the governor's office and told them, "We don't have a firm contractor in place, we don't have a firm number in place. We would still like for you to consider doing something for our community." We were given $450,000 as a placeholder and a commitment in recognition of the public health crisis that this is. And we were invited, suggested that we come back for additional bonding once we had a firm contract in place. We decided that we needed to go back out to bid, and we did. And we opened bids, I believe, in November, and we had another four bidders. This time, the range was significantly tighter, roughly $4.9 million to $5.7 million in terms of the pure construction costs. Now, that would have brought the total budget to $5.9 million. The assessments would be dramatic, $27,000, $113 a month, no doubt about it, numbers that no one wants to face. What I want to make a point of assuring you, the numbers, the final numbers in terms of the assessment include some contributions. The Connecticut Water Company had committed to $1.5 million contribution to this project. They will be giving us $1.1 million in cash and nearly $400,000 in materials. The reason we're doing it that way is that during that rebid process, we realized that Connecticut Water had access to the most aggressive and the best pricing for materials that will be put into the ground, so we decided to utilize that. Because when we went back to look at the original bids, the equipment or the materials cost on all of those bidders was in the $5,000 to $700,000, $800,000 range. And Connecticut Water Company could get it down to under $400,000. So, it was determined that that would be the best opportunity to move. So, that $1.1 million comes off the total project cost off of the assessments. We also have $410,000 from the Clean Water Fund. It's an outright grant. And then, if you factor in the $450,000 from the state bonding. I think one thing that's important to know, had we received the full $1.255, the impact of this most recent bidding and the low bidder would have reduced the assessment to about $21.5, $21,500, $21,600, or $90 a month. So, I will not stand here and say that we're going to get the additional $805,000. But what I will tell you is, we, myself, Sean, the Board of Selectmen, and there are volunteers in the community who are willing to work with our legislators, our state and federal legislators, we will work to bridge the gap between where we are currently in terms of funding for this project to diminish the impact on those who are being assessed. I'm encouraged by a couple of things. A warm reception from both Senator Chris Murphy's office and Congresswoman Rosa Delora's office. Going back to, there are some of us who have built some relationships with the incoming Lamont administration, and we intend to plead our case there. And the case is the same. This is a public health crisis. Lastly, in October, for those who were watching this kind of stuff, Congress passed and the President signed America's Water Infrastructure Act, which, I will read, quote, "authorizes federal funding for water infrastructure projects which leverages billions in water infrastructure spending." I give you the commitment that, like the first time when we realized that there was a problem, this administration and your state and federal delegation will be working to secure additional funding. There is also the opportunity that, because we have 18 months until completion of this project, there is the possibility that there may be more state grant programs available over that period of time. Now, no promises, but things like that do happen. So, obviously, I wasn't brief. Up here with me, I have Mary Jane Malvasi, who is the town's finance director. I have Dennis Johnson, our health director, who has been the owner of this project for the last 17 years from the town side, and Norb Church, who is an attorney who has worked closely with us throughout this process, and he was responsible for drafting the ordinances and securing the easements on some of the property. So, what we'd like to do now, begging the moderator's indulgence, is open it up to questions. And if I can answer them, I will. If not, I will go to our subject matter experts. Also, Matt Ritter, who is our bond counsel from Shipman and Goodman, is here. And he, if there are any questions about specifically why we are going to town meeting and not referendum again, actually, why don't I take that for just a quick second? Our charter provides for approving an expenditure, additional expenditure of this magnitude at town meeting. You asked a question. We did it at referendum last time. Why are we not doing it this time? Last time, we were asking the voters to authorize us borrowing $3.443 million. At this point, we do not think we will need to exceed that $3.443, which is the total, which is the high end of the amount that we can get from the Clean Water Revolving Fund. I messed that up, but... So, the charter allows town meeting to make the decision for the additional appropriation. We are not required to go to referendum because we are not going, we're not asking for authorization to either bond or borrow more money. That's the reason. And Matt can certainly clear that up if there are questions related to that. So, Mr. Moderator, the floor is yours.
So, the format will be three minutes on the topic, of course, and we'll come up as you come up. It's not pro or against, it's as you come up. Matt has promised me that everyone will get the chance to speak, and we'll make sure that happens. So, to make sure that happens, we'll have to hold you to three minutes as best we can, okay? So, who's first?
Somebody has to go first, right? I actually was going to wait until the end of the meeting, because my role standing here tonight was simply to say thank you to each and every one of the faces I see out here in our audience tonight that have come out on a rainy night during a very busy holiday period. But I want to say thank you to come out, for coming out and supporting us. Many, many of you know this has been a long endeavor. It hasn't been easy. My husband said the other day that he thinks of this project and says, "It's the perseverance project." And he's right. We have had to go through a lot of hurdles, Dennis knows better than anyone, but we got through them all, and it's been a long process. And we've had a lot of help along the way. And I want to thank everybody at the town level, past and present, for all their guidance and unending efforts above and beyond what we could have ever hoped for, to be our advocates for clean water and safe environment in our neighborhoods. But there are two people that I think have kind of been slipped through history, and I'd like to just take this opportunity to thank both of them publicly. Pat Widletz and Ed Myers did an amazing job for us. And about six years ago, Dennis, I think, 2012, they went to Hartford, because at the time, the water company was only allowed to contribute $650,000. And that was a restriction imposed by PURA, Public Utility Regulatory Authority. And we clearly said, "We need more help than that." And they went to bat for us in Hartford, and they changed the state statute for this project. That's huge. And I'll say it again, they changed the state statute for us. And it allowed the water company to then go from $650,000 to $1.5 million, which we have today. So, I think we need to really stop and thank them appropriately for their efforts, because we would not probably be here without that change that they were able to go through and accomplish. I'd like to say thank you to the past administration in town, Joe Mazza, who got us through the referendum. And I would like to thank the present officials, Sean, Matt, Mary Jane, certainly Pam and Norb, and the water company, of course, and also Sean, Scanlon, and Christine Cohen. They are going to bat for us like you can't believe. I have multiple conversations and meetings, and we could not be more fortunate to have the kind of leadership and connected officials that are connected to Hartford, that want to do the right thing and to keep our assessments at the original cost. As Matt said, there's no promises, but in today's world where there's such little faith in our officials, whether locally or nationally, government, we need to have a leap of faith here, because they've proven that they can do it. They've already done it the first time around when they got the initial money, and they are not backing away from turning every stone over in order to accomplish getting whatever money is out there for us. So, again, thank you to them, and thank you to everybody who has supported us along the way. We've had a long road. Again, as my husband says, it's the perseverance project, but we're not quitting. There's no need to, because we're this close to getting the shovel in the ground this winter and having fresh water and clean, safe water for not only us, but our future generations. Our past generations have really tried and haven't been able to do it, but we're going to do it. So, please vote yes, and let's get water to our communities.
Anyone else would like to address the town meeting or members, sir?
Yes, my name is Lee Shacter. I live on Lower Road, and I have a question, not a speech. How do we know this is the real number? We've been told several, many things, many times, and it hasn't quite turned out. What happens if you get 2/3 of the way through the project and you don't have the bucks?
We just received authorization today from the Department of Public Health to move to the contract signature with the construction firm who bid the project. Once that contract is established, they need to deliver the product as delivered for the price they did. In terms of the funding, I said earlier, there are no promises, other than we will work hard to make up the difference between what was originally projected and what the new cost is.
Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Mike Bowdre, 14 Meriden Street. At one point, I'm just new to this discussion, and I want to just clarify, the bid, the bond for the first bidder, back a napkin, I'm thinking it looks like about 5% per household. Is that money off the table, or?
It is off the table. You cannot call the bid bond if you do not award it to the next lowest bidder.
Okay.
So, by going out to bid again, we basically gave up the right to that $3.1 million.
Thank you.
Or it was $300,000. It was a 10% bid bond.
Anybody else?
Hi, my name is Carol Kelleher, and I live at 139 Marshall Avenue in Mulberry Point. And I too appreciate everything that everyone has done to try and get us water. But I worked for a construction company for 43 years, and I know it's very unusual that you do not have change orders and requests for more money if you run into a problem or something that's going to exceed the cost when you have a construction contract. And I'm curious to know, like, $28,000 is a lot of money for me.
I hear.
And I just want to know, like, what percentage would you give it for the chance that we are going to get down to what we have? Do you think it's a 10% chance? Do you think it's a 50% chance, an 80% chance? Because that might influence how I vote.
I'm not going to put a number on it, because that would commit me to something that I can't always deliver.
Okay. And is there any way to tell that that $28,000 won't be $40,000?
At this point, if we have a contract in place, the contractor has to deliver it. And there will be a performance bond posted for the construction project.
I know.
Which we will pull.
But there are always change orders. There's always requests for things that come up. Contingency.
Right.
All right.
We do have a healthy contingency built into this as well, so that $28,000 or $27,000 or $28,000 assessment number may not come to realization if it comes in where the construction estimates are.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else with questions or comments?
Jeff Hubbard, 22 Faulkner Drive. I have a 250-foot well that pumps out salt. Can't water your plants, can't water your dog. It's tricky, and I appreciate all the efforts that have gone into this. Dennis has been to my house. A lot has gone into this, and I appreciate it. What I just want to get clear, you're asking for us to approve an overdraft of $3.1 million, in essence?
Absolutely.
And you're going to make best efforts to collect that through grants and other sources like the water company?
I am. We actually met with the water company, Pam Millman and I met with the water company on Monday, and made that same ask.
Okay. It's critically important. I wish you the best.
Thank you.
Thanks, Matt.
Sir?
Chris Teigen, 18 Meriden Street. I've got two questions. One involves the residents on Lower Road who were not members of Long Cove Association. One of them has asked me to ask a question as to whether or not they are still, coming off of the fact that Lower Road doesn't belong to Indian Cove, are they still absolved from paying the easement, the assessment? And is that documented anywhere?
The way the assessment would work is there are about five, six, seven homes on the lower part of Lower Road that are not part of the project. There will be a Water Main that goes in front of those homes. There will not be taps put into the Water Main. However, in the ordinance of the town adopted approximately a year ago, there is a provision that if any one of those five, six, seven homes wishes to tie in, they may do so, and they must also pay the same assessment as everyone else.
Okay, and that's in the ordinance?
Yes.
Okay. And the second question is, in the newspaper, they mentioned soft costs added to the, it sounds like they're saying there's soft costs added to the current bid price. Now, is that situation, in other words, the money that the town has already spent, which I'm guessing is over $200,000 at this point, is that added to the $6.5 million, so that we're really looking at $6.7 or $8 million?
No, those costs are within that number.
Okay, that's all I had.
Good, thank you, Kristen.
Can I make a third point?
Sure. Norb?
One other point to that question. If any of those five, six, seven homeowners on the lower part of Lower Road are seriously thinking about tying into water, now's the opportunity to do so, because what it does is it increases the number of households by which this project will be divided among. So...
Oh, you want it back? Okay.
Creating feedback.
He needs that one.
That's my microphone. So, you can come on.
So, there is, if we got a few people in the lower part of Lower Road to come on in to the project, it just lowers the cost for everyone and includes lowering the cost for them, as opposed to seven, eight, nine years down the road hooking in, and then at that point, they pay the same assessment that everyone did initially.
Anyone else with a question or comment? Going once? Going twice? Nobody? All right. So, now we're going to proceed to vote. And our lovely town meeting form of government is very, very quaint. We have some folks who are going to tally up the votes. Okay. We're going to bring up some counters. I know one counter is David Knapp, and there's a second counter also, sir. So, what we'll do is call for votes. David, you come up. We'll call for a vote. All those folks in favor will raise their card, we'll count those, and then we will ask for all those opposing to raise their card. Fair enough? Questions? All right. So, all folks voting in favor, please raise your card.
Don't forget to count yourself. Don't forget to count yourself.
All right, and now, so, could we now have a showing of all those folks who are opposing So, after the votes have taken, the vote is in favor, 162, opposed, five. So, I will take now a motion to adjourn.
So, move.
Second?
All in favor?
In favor.
Congratulations, Dennis, congratulations.